Download the My Hingham app today and report issues and get information on town government with ease. Available on the App Store and Google Play. You can submit service requests or gain information with just a few taps on your phone. Using the My Hingham app puts immediate access to town resources in the palm of your hand, including calendars of meetings and events, agendas for upcoming meetings, building permit filing options, online bill payment options, and info about our boards, committees, departments, and services. For more information, please scan the QR code on your screen.
Good evening. It is October 29th, 2024. I'm calling to order this meeting of the Select Board for the Town of Hingham. This meeting is being held in person and/or remotely as an alternate means of public access, pursuant to Chapter 2 of the Acts of 2023 and all other applicable laws temporarily amending certain provisions of the state's open meeting law. You are hereby advised that this meeting and all communications during this meeting may be recorded by the Town of Hingham in accordance with the open meeting law. If any participant wishes to record this meeting, please notify the chair at the start of the meeting in accordance with Mass General Law's Chapter 38, Section 20F, so that the chair may inform all other participants of said recording. Is there anyone recording this meeting other than the Town of Hingham? Seeing none, we'll begin with a pledge of allegiance. Oh, before we do that, just for the record, noting attending and participating in the meeting this evening, Bill Ramsey, Liz Klein, and myself, Joe Fisher. Now, if you're willing and able, we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And I do not believe we have approval of any minutes for this evening. So we will move on to what is probably the most important item on our agenda, which is the recognition of Phyllis Chapman's 107th birthday, which is hard to comprehend, but actually it's easy to comprehend if you know Phyllis. I have been to her 106th, 105th, 104th, 103rd birthdays, and each time I've been just so impressed and amazed at her vigor. It's just a real honor that she continues to grace us here in Hingham. Before we read the proclamation, Liz, did anything you wanted to add?
Just happy birthday to Phyllis. I've had the pleasure of meeting her and celebrating her birthday over the past several years as well, and it's an honor to be with her. She's certainly an inspiration, so our community is very lucky.
Bill?
Great. So like yourself, Joe, I've got to know her by attending her birthdays from starting at 102 down to 107th. And not only is she a remarkable person, but she has remarkable friends. And the women who organize her birthday every year are very active with our Center for Active Living, and they're just a wonderful group of friends to her. They care for each other. They care for Phyllis. They care for her family. And it's just great how they do this every year, and it's wonderful to see Phyllis every year when we go to her birthday. So congratulations, happy birthday, Phyllis.
So our gift to Phyllis this evening is we will not be singing "Happy Birthday." We will spare her that, but instead, I will read the certificate of congratulations that this Select Board will be signing to Phyllis in recognition of a very special occasion, your 107th birthday. The Select Board, on behalf of the Town of Hingham, hereby takes this opportunity to wish you a very happy 107th birthday. A Hingham resident for over six decades, a Bentley College alum, an avid fitness and travel enthusiast, and so much more. We admire your youthful spirit and wish you a happy birthday filled with joy and happiness. Happy birthday. This is Chapman. So we will all sign this at the end of speaking day. Is there anyone here who wanted to add any comments? Seeing none, we will see her again on her 108th birthday. Moving on, our next item on the agenda is to consider approval of the application for a change of manager at Linden Ponds, Inc., 300 Linden Ponds Way in Hingham. I believe it's, we have John Amonte and Stephen Slitchus as the proposer. Did I get that right?
Yes.
Okay, so if you just want to come up and just introduce yourself, that would be awesome.
Good evening. John Amonte is Associate Executive Director.
If you could just go there so that the people watching on Zoom can say hello and see.
Sorry. Yes, John Amonte, Associate Executive Director at Linden Ponds.
And I'm Stephen Slitchus, Design Director at Linden Ponds.
Hopefully, yes. I mean, we see the change here, and am I correct, Tom, that this deals primarily with their ability to serve liquor at Linden Ponds?
That's right.
And it looks, I mean, I've reviewed this, and it looks like all the appropriate certifications have been made. Glad to see you. Bill, do you have any questions?
No questions. Everything looked in order. Congratulations.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Happy to be back home.
Thank you. Liz?
No questions. Tom, I'm assuming the application is complete. It's complete.
It is. Yep.
I see that Corey is included as well, so good.
So just from personal experience, my mother was living at Linden Ponds until this past June, and very positive experience, and appreciate all your work.
Thank you.
Thank you. So before I entertain a motion, is there anyone, member of the public, who has comments or questions on this? If not, I will accept the motion.
Make a motion to approve the request of Linden Ponds Incorporated doing business as Linden Ponds, 300 Linden Ponds Way, Hingham, for a change of manager from Tomas Omar Gonzalez to Stephen Slitchus in accordance with the application for a change of manager filed with the Town of Hingham on October 21st, 2024, subject to the approval of the Alcoholic Beverages Control Commission.
Second.
Roll call vote. Bill?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
And I am an aye as well. Welcome. Good to see you.
Thank you for being back home. Really happy. Appreciate you all. Have a great day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Take care. Next item on our agenda is to consider approval of the application for a Class 2 license by Airborne Auto Sales, Inc. Who do we have here? Khalid and Francis, is it Nassar?
Nassar.
Please.
Good afternoon. My name is Khalid Nassar. This is my wife Frances. Good to see you. Good to see you all. Thank you for being here too. We're just excited to start a new business. It's not new, actually coming back. We did that business about 20 years ago in Orange County in Florida. And I got married in Massachusetts native. She dragged me back years.
Well done.
You came for the weather, I'm sure.
Yeah. And now our son, he's excited to start this business too. Our business strictly buying, selling, shipping used car online. So back then, we used to do, it's no IT, no technology. I have to drive four hours, Jacksonville, Westbound Beach. Now everything right there remotely done, and that's we're willing to start again. We do have an office here in Derby Street, just in case if any client would like to meet with us in person, so we'll be there.
But in terms of buying and selling cars, where does that happen?
That usually happens through the auctions, insurance auctions, car rental auction, bank repossession, auctions too. That's all tracked online, could be in Texas, could be in California, could be anywhere in the country. And we buy and sell and ship through online transaction.
All works. So, Tom, does this need any, I think I know the answer, any planning board approval? There's no facility that's where partners in issue or?
No, it's not required, and it's, they can be sold almost anywhere in the country with the exception of this location.
And actually, let me just add one more. I have a business partner overseas. It could be international too, so that's my actually main focus too.
Yeah, the cars or car parts just can't be sold out of this location.
Got it, which would explain why we would not need any other licenses or permits here. And so I've looked through, is there any additional police review that would need to be done?
Nope. Everything is in work as it is.
Yep. Okay. Bill, any questions?
No question. Good luck with it.
Thank you.
Yes, appreciated. And Liz?
No additional questions. Thank you.
We really welcome you and wish you success.
Thank you very much.
Any member of the public with comments or questions? Seeing none, I am prepared to take a motion.
I will make a motion to approve the issuance of a Class 2 auto dealer license to Airborne Auto Sales Incorporated located at 900 Derby Street, Suite 200, Hingham, in accordance with the application for an auto dealer license filed with the Town of Hingham on September 16th, 2024.
Roll call vote. Liz?
Aye.
Bill? And I am an aye as well. Good to see you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I appreciate it.
Are you hearing a few?
Yes. We're getting like a, yes.
Can you ask Carol if she can hear? Cool. Can you mess? I just hit a speaker. Okay. You're all set. Yeah, thank you so much. Very much.
Okay, next on our agenda is to consider the appointment of police prosecutors and special police officers. We have Deputy Chief Ryan O'Shea.
Thank you. Good evening. Good evening. Yearly appointments of special police officers, court prosecutors, and liquor enforcement officers. So we'll start with special police officers. In addition to our full-time officers, our department has special police officers who work in a part-time capacity that might help us with 4th of July, certainly help us with details around town with the roadworks, that help us with elections, and their trains, just like a full-time officer, at their own expense. We do provide them with a firearm and body armor, but everything else they pay for, not a lot of expense paid out by the town. And it's very helpful having some of them are retired Hingham police officers, some of them have come to us from other places. We have one officer, a teacher. So it's nice. We have a nice variety. But they play a big role in assisting our department and helping the community. A couple of the special officers, that's part of their job, Leslie Badger, the animal control officer, Robert Master, Ken Corson, and Assistant Hire Master, Joe Driscoll. Being a special police officer is part of their job description, so they are full-time officers, but the rest of them work for us, you know, in a part-time capacity.
Are there any additional background checks or checks that you do to, before these appointments are recommended?
Yes, we have, on our special police officer list, we have two new appointments we're requesting this year. That's for Kevin McCarthy and Antonio Melendez, and they are in the process of going through background checks. Good news is they work full-time internally at the Sheriff's Department. They're not just up these sheriffs, but they have jobs inside the sheriff's department. So they've already been vetted by another law enforcement agency, but we will still do our due diligence. So we just ask that, as part of the appointment, is just contingent on successfully completing that background check.
And that is, I'm sorry, for which two officers?
Kevin McCarthy and Antonio Melendez.
Got it. So what I'm recommending is, why don't we just go through, we can do this, then we'll do the liquor enforcement officers and the police prosecutors, and then I'll take motions on all those.
Okay. So our court prosecutors, Hingham District Court is located in the town of Hingham on the boulevard. So Leach Department sends a prosecutor to bring their cases forth to the court. So other towns have prosecutors, police officers that are in the court, and they're all day. So they're at the court, things do happen at the court. And although they would be protected kind of under mutual aid or community caretaking, we'd like to just appoint them as special officers, also just to give them an extra layer of protection, and then they can act if something happens down there and our prosecutor is tied up in the court and something's going on in the parking lot, one of them can act as a police officer. So it's yearly appointment. There were no changes this year to the list.
So these appointments are made because the court is located physically in the Town of Hingham?
Exactly. And these are all full-time police officers, just with other agencies, and they work at Hingham primarily.
Got it. And then we have the liquor enforcement officers?
Liquor enforcement officers are, all the detectives in the detective division was no change this year, and they help enforce the laws of the Liquor Control Act. They do inspections at establishments in town that sell alcohol, and then they bring forth to the board any violations that either they find or that are reported.
I think that completes the list. So Liz, do you have any questions on any of these potential appointments?
I don't. Obviously, you have reviewed this, and Chief Jones has reviewed this list. When do you expect the background checks on the new officers?
Probably middle of next week. We're almost done.
Great. No other questions?
Mr. Ramsey?
No questions. I know we just annually, obviously, a lot of the special police officers are some of our retirees, so it's good to see some of these names that are very familiar to me and very familiar to our community. Unrelated, Ryan, I know we have two candidates in the police academy. When's the anticipated graduation date?
Absolutely. We have candidates starting, they'll be starting in January, and then we have some other candidates in the hiring process, and we'll be bringing those in front of you, I think, on November 12th.
Don't we have two?
They haven't started yet.
They haven't started yet? Do they took a physical fitness test?
Yes, so they'll start.
It was pre-academy?
Yes, so they'll start in January. And these new hires, they should actually all go together, one big group, which would be nice.
Great. Thank you.
Okay. Any member of the public with comments or questions? Seeing none, I'll begin by making the first motion, and I move to appoint individuals as special police officers for the Town of Hingham through October 31st, 2025. And I would recommend the individuals as listed, with the exception of Antonio Melendez and Kevin McCarthy, where their appointments will be contingent upon their successful completion of a background check. Because there were so.
Second.
Roll call vote. Bill?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
And I am an aye as well. We'll move on to liquor enforcement officers.
I'd make a motion to appoint the following individuals as liquor enforcement officers for the Town of Hingham through October 31st, 2025, as listed.
Second.
Roll call vote. Liz?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I am an aye as well, and now we'll move to the police prosecutors.
I'll make a motion to appoint the police prosecutors and backups as special police officers for the Town of Hingham through October 31st, 2025, as listed.
Second.
Roll call vote. Liz?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
And I am an aye as well. Thank you.
Thank you.
You'll see us before that. Next item is an update on the new Foster Elementary School. I see Ray Estes lurking here, and Linda, Linda Hill. So.
Perfect timing, Linda. Same with this. Get your elbows quick.
I'm trying to follow in Liz's footsteps. So Ray, if you don't mind starting and then introducing whoever you'd like to speak in the order you'd like them to speak.
Sure. Good evening. Ray Estes, 92 Fort Hill Street, Vice Chair of the School Building Committee. To my left is Chris Carroll of PMA Consultants, our OPM, also a resident, and Linda Hill, Chair of the School Building Committee. So, good evening. Thanks for the opportunity. We have a presentation, show you some visuals. We're almost finished. So overall, I would say we're extremely pleased with the progress of the project. I think when we were here last, we did share a little disappointment in the fact that we weren't able to keep the schedule that we originally had hoped to open in September of this year. I think we all acknowledge that it was, from the outset, a very aggressive schedule, and everything needed to go perfectly. And I think we had said before that everything did not quite go perfectly, but that's the way it happens with a big construction project, the biggest construction project in the town's history. So, but be that as it may, it's still been a very successful project. Things are moving very quickly every day. And we do have some visuals, and just a reminder of the financials behind this project. The overall budget that was approved at town meeting, I guess it would have been November of '22. Yeah, $113,335,749. We are still on budget and have a contingency remaining that we are looking at a few alternates that we put off at the outset of the project. Softball field, irrigation, and one other thing, one other thing, roof tiles that we believe we'll be able to include on the project, and that will be kind of a next spring item at the time we're doing more site work for the next phase. And the other item is solar panels on the roof of the school. We've done extensive work in research and planning for that. We believe that we'll be able to afford it within the budget contingency remaining. And you can see the numbers that, you know, how we're progressing, what we've been billed to date. The town's received over $20 million in reimbursement from the MSBA so far, with about $4 million more to come over time, and the breakdown of various key aspects of the project costs. Next slide. So the progress, just a reminder, we did this in two phases. One was really to get the site ready to build on, and that's mostly complete. There is some additional site work that will be remaining with some circulation changes at different times throughout the next several months, as well as post-construction site work. And Phase 2, which is essentially the vertical construction of the building, that is over 80% complete now, with a lot of interior finish work being finalized. Next slide, please. Here's just a summary of some things that are happening right now, this week, next week, actively every day, flooring, you know, certain finishes. A lot of the classrooms will be actually complete and being cleaned so that they're ready to be occupied and ready to accept furniture, furniture and equipment and fixtures, which will be delivered over the next three, four weeks. Really, you know, at this point, I will say that in terms of schedule, and we'll look at that in a minute in detail, but we originally had a substantial completion date of August, the end of August, essentially. That has been delayed twice now. So we're now looking at a substantial completion date of mid-December, which is very tight, but everyone is working very hard to make sure that we keep that date. Plans are in motion to ensure that we can receive staff and students on January 2nd. Next slide. Next slide, please. So the next few slides are just some visuals. Here's the exterior, the front entrance, virtually complete except for the sign, the name of the school and the canopy area in front of the main entrance. Next is picture of the gym. Flooring was installed and sanded, first coat of polyurethane, and now is being painted with lines and logos and things of that nature. Next, typical classroom progress. So really just finishing touches, cleaning, and then furniture. Next slide is typical hallway progress. Some at different stages. In a building like this, they work from the top down. So third floor finished first, then second, and then the last to be completed is the first floor in terms of finishes and flooring, things of that nature. Next slide. Typical hallway practice, progress in, on the second floor of one of the wings. You'll notice the design on the floor. Each grade level has a common area, how the classrooms are grouped, and each common area is designed with a different ecosystem. So I think this one is a title pool. I had to guess. Yeah. Yeah. But anyway, they're all unique, and it's exciting. Next slide is installation of, or some assembly of play structures out in the area where the playground is going to be installed and is in the process of being installed. The next slide is just a snapshot of the site with the existing school in blue, the new school in yellow, and some dates of the phasing. The original dates in the bottom in green and purple, and then the current schedule, September 5th, 2025. That's finishing Phase 3, all of the post-construction site work, and December 16th, 2024, being the substantial completion date for the construction of the building. And the last is just the final layout of the site, how it'll look with the new school, the parking areas, the softball field, the playground, all the circulation finalized. Likely September of 2025, should be ready for the next school year complete. And that's what we have. Happy to take questions.
Quite impressive. Did you want to add anything?
No, I wish we had a picture of the mural. There's a, where the stairwell goes up, there's a three-story mural, and it's the different levels of the ecosystem, so under the water, above the water, up in the sky. It's hand-painted, and then they're turning it into a photograph and laminating on the wall. It's really nice. Next time, we'll see you.
Okay. Liz, do you have any questions?
Well, thank you. This is so impressive, and it's exciting to see it made together. I know the timeline is a bit delayed, but as you said, Ray, it was, some of it was to be expected, and certainly safety is our number-one priority. So I think waiting till January is just, it is what it is. Glad to hear that it's on budget. When do you see those final inspections happening on the first floor?
Well, substantial completion date holds December 16th, and we expect it to. Then those.
Saying leading up to.
Yeah, the inspections will be happening as areas are ready to be inspected, they'll be inspected. So it's not just when it's all finished, someone goes in. It's, it, certain things happen when systems are turned on and tested. And there are certain things that happen over time. So over the next, you know, six weeks or so.
They're ongoing now, like the overheads, the first floor, electrical, everything is pretty much done.
Okay.
And as he said, it'd just be the HVAC heating system, geothermal wells, everything will be coming online in the next probably two weeks. Testing will occur at that.
Great.
And then we'll have elevator and everything else that goes along with it.
Excellent, excellent. How has it been going for the, the students? Has the student experience been, been okay during the construction?
You know, we, we're, we're really appreciative of the, of the administration and the staff for being as patient and working with us through a very active construction site for a little bit longer than we had hoped. They've had to get creative with play areas and, and other logistics, parking, things of that nature. But, um, you know, we appreciate the cooperation and it'll, it's final stretch now.
Yeah, the principal's been wonderful.
Yeah.
He's just getting hard accommodating, communicating with the parents. And actually, I think this, so far this year has gone the note.
Great, good. Glad to hear that. What is the timeline for some of those alternate decisions, like the softball field, the solar?
Yeah, we've talked about them recently. I think probably come February, we'll be in a position to request updated pricing for those. And then I think we're looking at, um, you know, likely a March, April kind of abatement and demolition time period. Um, and the parking lot to start then, and then, and then that's around that time is when that would start, probably May-ish. Um, installation of the softball field if we decide to, um, and can afford the irrigation. The solar panels would not be handled by this contractor under this contract. It would be a separate contract and really can happen anytime after the school opens. So we would look to that next spring.
Okay. Excellent. Thank you.
Bill?
I don't only have any questions, just a couple of comments. Just, as you know, my daughter's fifth grader there. And there's so much excitement, you know, amongst her and our friends. All they're talking about is the new school. And just want to echo my thanks to Linda, Ray, Chris. I mean, you've done phenomenal work here. The challenges of this site were significant. I mean, building into that hill and the work that went into that was so impressive. And the school is, is, looks, looks great, ton of excitement. I would also echo what you said about Mr. Scheifel, the staff and the PTO have all been fantastic and getting through this process. So my appreciation for all the great work you've all done.
So Ray, just so I'm clear, when would you anticipate demolition to start on the existing school?
Yeah, March demo, well, first is maybe start February, mid-January when we get out of the school. We've got to vacate the existing school.
Right.
Into the new school, and it takes about two to three weeks to finish vacating the school after that, start abatement. And then the way they have it scheduled now, it looks like they'll overlap about a month behind the start of abatement. They'll start demo and kind of work through the building. End of March, early April will be done.
Is there any thought about doing that when school's not in session so that you're not having extra noise there?
They, it's challenging. Uh, just if you limit the hours, it's going to take longer.
Sure.
Uh, and then you'll jeopardize the end date of completing fields and plantings and everything else that goes along with it.
Sure. And then getting from substantial completion of the building to when it's actually done. Um, another, you know, you anticipate all, all the remaining items being filled, uh, being fulfilled. What's your timeline on that? Just so I'm clear, is that basically through the, down through the summer?
Uh, yeah, so they're, they're already starting to assemble a punch list because there are some spaces that are complete, right? And then that'll continue to be built and then worked on over time. So I would say between the punch list of the main construction of the building, uh, the abatement demolition, uh, site work, including parking and, and final circulation, um, other attributes like the softball field. I, you know, I think that'll get into the summer of 2025 and, and it should be all, everything complete, I would think, by September of '25.
What happens to the assets that are in the current school, like the desks or other property of?
Sure.
The schools or even teachers have their own.
Right. Well, there's plans in place to start moving the teachers' belongings and pack up their classrooms in December. Some of have already started, you know, preliminary plans to do that. We have movers engaged to do that. And there's a schedule worked out for December to do that. In addition, the furniture and technology and, and other equipment in the school. I think Superintendent referred to it as a shopping experience for the other schools. So folks in the other schools, particularly the elementary schools, administration staff will have an opportunity to go in if there are items in there that they can use in their buildings that are better than what they have, you know, some improvement, better technology, you know, better condition, newer, things of that nature. If you recall with the middle school, what was done was, it was also kind of a garage sale held where it was opened up to the community to come in. And I think I purchased some old drums back in, you know, 2014, summer of 2014. So there'll be an opportunity, I think, to do something like that. And there'll be, I'm sure, a number of items declared surplus by the, the school department.
Great. And I've seen that the applications for reimbursements from the state have been made, money's coming back. Is there anything that our board can do to facilitate? It looks like everything's being handled well, but just let us know if there's anything that we can do.
Thank you. Yeah, I, I think that's kind of, it's, it's a process that kind of takes care of itself. You know, our OPM works closely with the school business office to coordinate the submissions and, and it's all electronic and happens on a regular basis. And as the numbers showed, I think we received 20 and a half million, 24 and a half million of the reimbursement so far. So, um, you know, we're nearing the end of that and that'll continue. And we won't receive the last dollar probably until the project's closed out because we have to do all the post-construction submissions to the MSBA to determine, or have them determine what's deemed eligible or ineligible for reimbursement. So there, there's some final dollars that'll take some time to, to be reconciled and come in.
I think the MSBA will actually hold the last 5% until the final audit is done. So we'll do everything and we'll get all the submissions in, everything is complete. And then it takes them maybe six months to do their final audit after everything is done.
Sure. And are we withholding a percentage from the contractors until there's a final sign-off?
Yes.
To retain it on each.
Right.
Yeah, it's about 5%.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's 5% is the most permitted by statute.
Got it. I've got no other questions. I don't know if there's anyone, I don't see anyone in the room, but if there's anyone online with questions or comments or commendations for this incredible work? Seeing none, the three of you, you're more than the dynamic duo. It's the, what's the right term for the trio? But it, it's really been fantastic. So appreciate your, your time and effort.
It'll be a ribbon cutting. I think we'll reach out to the MSBA to find out dates for then, probably after the school opens because I don't think it's being coordinated around Christmas and the holidays. So we'll eventually have a date.
Yeah, we don't want to get in the way of any work being finished, so.
Right.
A lot of tight time.
We're all happy to wait.
Yeah, I'll wait. Exactly. Thank you.
You're gonna, you're gonna wrap up the school with a big ribbon and that will be the, the holiday present. Thank you. Thank you for being.
Thank you. Great work.
Okay, moving on to a discussion of DPW operations. I see Ashley is here. Good to see you.
Hi.
And so I'm going to ask both Ashley and Michelle to lead us in this discussion.
Sure. Good evening. So I had, Sharon and I had collected a bunch of data from other communities on how they've organized and run their DPWs over the last several weeks. So we looked at 10 other towns, mostly on the South Shore, mostly our benchmark communities, but I picked a few other communities on the 3A corridor or just kind of similar to us down here on the coast. So we looked at, you know, their population, their total FY25 public works budgets and tried to come up with kind of a per capita budget number, knowing that a lot of this is apples to oranges because some towns have a golf course as part of their DPW. Some towns actually have their Board of Health run the transfer station, for example. So there are some differences. But overall, that gave us kind of a general sense of the per capita budget and we're right in the middle of those 10 communities. The size of the DPWs varies, but I would say that one thing that we heard from many of the communities is that they also struggle with chronic vacancies in this department, that it's hard to find folks with CDLs to do this type of work. So people are trying to, you know, address that in different ways, but we are certainly not alone in our struggle to, to try to hire and retain people in DPW, which makes it a little bit more difficult for Ashley and Randy to get the work done that they're trying to do.
So thank you. This, that is really responsive to the question that I had, and I believe Liz, Liz had raised in terms of, where does our DPW stand in terms of our neighborhood communities? Are we funding it enough? Are we a low average, above average? And what I'm hearing is that we're pretty much in the middle. And which is, which is important because to the extent that we think that additional work needs to be done by DPW, it means we're going to have to come up with more funding. And I, I think there are residents who have contacted each of us individually with requests for additional things to be done. This board considers other projects, uh, and often those projects will involve some aspect of DPW involvement. And so I know that the folks are, are working, I was going to say hard, but it's more than hard because it's, you're understaffed. So many way, many cases that they're overworking, which means overtime, and that's something that we need to manage. And something else that we need to look at is what we can do to facilitate filling the, the staffing's shortfalls. So this was very helpful. The second part of the discussion is sort of where, where are we going for the rest of the fall and the winter is what DPW's plans are in that regard. So I'm assuming Ashley will be the, taking the lead on that?
Yep. So right now we're just working on basically fall cleanups and getting all of that stuff complete with also prepping for the winter, making sure that we have all the salt and sand and all of our equipment is up and running and in good shape to make sure the roads and everything are safe for everybody. And then coming into getting, and also like prepping for when it comes to the spring, when we will be going back into our mowing and weed whacking and plantings.
So, you know, looking forward, I know, and you and I have talked about this, that we have some important events coming up with respect to the 250th anniversary of this country's founding. And we're hoping that we'll have lots of folks coming to Hingham and we want to make sure that Hingham puts on its best face. So we, again, that's another DPW project that we need to make sure that, that you are adequately staffed and have the right support so we can make that happen. So appreciate your time. Couple of other issues I want to talk about in terms of communications. If residents have concerns, they, they see a pothole or whatever it is, I, I know the three of us know how that should be handled. But Tom, maybe just, just something that you really like to talk about.
Sure. I highly recommend any residents that, um, that want to successfully and quickly and easily engage with the town on matters of, such as potholes and trees, limbs and the like, that you download, go to the apps, the Apple Store and download the My Hingham app.
Yeah, actually don't have to go to the Apple Store.
Fuck. Well, how do you?
Go right online.
How do you do that now? Whatever it is, wherever you get apps now.
Right.
Yeah, that's right. And download My Hingham app. And it's a really intuitive process to be able to input and even take a picture of an issue, input it directly into the app, send it up. It goes directly to Ashley and her team. They, they immediately assess it and assign it to the appropriate crew where it can get done, often as soon as the next day. When they go through different, people go through different channels and make phone calls, even either to my office or even directly to Randy or Ashley, it's outside of that chain and needs to be brought directly. It needs to be brought purposefully into the chain of, of assignments and it's less, uh, it's less likely to happen as quickly. So strongly recommend people start using My Hingham, uh, My Hingham app if they haven't downloaded it yet.
Great. Thank you.
Yeah, we did definitely, um, but when people are able to put it in through the app and then they are able to send us pictures, it helps us a lot, especially in situations with like potholes or hanging limbs, things like that for us to be able to assess. Because if we know, you know, if it's dear a wire, then we have to contact Hingham Light so that they can come out. Because those types of like limbs and things, you know, the light department actually handles. And then we'll clean up the debris in the aftermath of them getting it off the wires. So though, we love that, if people would download My Hingham or even just calling into the DPW office, even if it's outside ours, they can leave a message on the general voicemail box and we check that first thing every morning. And the girls get service requests put in to be able to get that out to the guys to get things taken care of around town.
Great. And Tom and Michelle, where are we in terms of the capital leads of DPW? And are, are there priority items that we need to make sure are prioritized?
So I think that the Capital Outlay Committee and the SLU Board and AdCom over the last two years have recognized that DPW was falling behind in terms of the capital outlay plan and tried to allocate more resources to them. I think some of the challenge that Ashley and Randy are having now is even though we've got the money for these vehicles, the availability of them is still like very delayed. And you saw last week that we went out to our second contract just to find one vehicle. So we've got some funds in place and they're constantly looking to just try to find the equipment and vehicles we need as soon as possible. But those kind of COVID-era delays are still plaguing us as they are, you know, other departments.
Can I just jump in on that too? So that's, Michelle's absolutely accurate. That, that's all the bad news. The good news is through the override, we bumped the capital, overall capital budget by a half million dollars a year, which is, if the equipment were ever available when we tried to buy it, would be a, a really great boon to departments like Ashley's. That will straighten itself out over time. That's not going to last forever. But it's, it's not, and it's not just public works, obviously. It's police, it's fire, it's schools. Uh, all the departments that need large capital equipment is really going to benefit from that money. So that's in place. So the town did a good thing there.
Liz?
Excellent. Thank you, Joe, and thank you, Ashley and Michelle for putting this together. It's, it's really helpful to see the benchmark information and just get a sense of kind of where we stand. I guess, you know, what I'm thinking about is, you know, are we on track with what we want to get done across town? So for example, the paving schedule, given this budget and given the, the personnel that we have, do you feel like we are able to implement that to the schedule that we're hoping to?
Um, when it comes to paving, I know this year we did have some setbacks with trying to get down the crook corn area done. I feel like a lot of those setbacks are more of the utilities, us being able to get some repairs done before we got the final road put in. And the awesome new rain gardens, which will be great for the area and everything like that. You know, obviously more funding would help us be able to do more roads. But, you know, we're trucking along with what we can get done.
Yeah.
Right now.
Do you think our plan and the pace of our plan is comparable to the other towns?
That is something I didn't get a chance to look into yet.
Okay.
We were more looking at just structure-wise of the DPWs. I'm not 100% on their upkeep of their paving plan and how they determine theirs because every town kind of runs this a little bit differently.
Sure, understood. And I don't mean to put you on the spot, but I do want to have a sense of, I, in the. And I don't mean to put you on the spot, but I do want to have a sense of, and this is, you know, I think an ongoing discussion, are we setting you up for success? Do you have the right people, the right number of people, the right budget to kind of, I think, implement our vision for what the town looks like? And obviously safety when it comes to roads, sidewalks, et cetera. So look forward to, you know, your feedback and, and continuing that discussion. Because that's, that's kind of the, where I'm coming from with this is I want to make sure that we're, that we're doing what we need to do to kind of, to meet our expectations and the expectations of the residents.
Absolutely. I mean, it did, it did hurt us to lose positions with this past year. We can't deny that. And us being able to kind of do, keep up with certain things around town. There's, you know, there's so many things that play into it. We're hoping to be able to fill some of the vacancies that we do have and, you know, it would be helpful if we did have more positions that we could fill more vacancies to have the extra hands on deck to get more of these tasks done.
Sure.
In a more timely fashion.
Okay. And I know this has been an ongoing discussion is, is how, how to recruit and retain employees. So certainly open to your feedback there if you have other ideas. We, we want to help support you in that.
Yeah, we've been getting a, a lot of applicants with the postings that we just redid and reposted. And so me and Randy and the guys have all been looking over those resumes and hopefully we'll be able to start doing some interviews and stuff soon to really get some new employees in.
Excellent. Good. Well, thank you for all you're doing.
No problem.
Bill?
So obviously the vacancies are obviously a, a challenge for us, but looking at this chart, it's not just Hingham DPW, it seems to be all across the South Shore. So the vacancies seem to be plaguing every department that we've looked at. My only question is, Ashley, and I'm, Tom may know this as well, in the past, we've discussed paying for the CDL of new employees. Obviously, we require our DPW employees to have a CDL when they come on board. And we've discussed the town paying for it or delaying it as part of their entry on duty as, as an recruitment tool. Obviously, you think a CDL costs about $2,500 or so, right around there. Have we implemented that or are we still discussing it?
Yeah, so we've implemented it, I don't know, a couple of months ago, several months ago, I guess, and it's been really working well. We got two new applicants that came in under that rule. And the, what we ask for is that any of our applicants have to, when, when they apply, we tell them that you have to have, by your start date, you have to have a learner's permit for a CDL. And then that technically allows them to drive the vehicles with, well, obviously with someone in the vehicle with them, that they would have to in order to do their job. So that's happening and then we're asking them to expedite getting the full CDL within that period that we're covering the cost for.
So, so we do, we are covering?
We are, yes. Oh yeah, yeah. No, and it's really been working well. We got a, we got a couple of great candidates coming. We've actually had two other candidates that, that took other jobs before the vacant, the other departures to cause more vacancies, but that actually came in with CDL, so we didn't even have to do it. So, which is even better. That, that's the, that's the ultimate goal, but given that doesn't happen.
I know that over.
We're also looking at is to get our own certified trainer in DPW. Waiting for a vacancy to open in the school for that, where we're hoping myself and one other employee to be certified CDL trainers so that we can do onsite training instead of sending them to a school.
We, in all of our job descriptions, that one of the last lines is "and other duties as assigned." Poor Ashley is falling under that here with CDL trainers.
I, I think that will help. I do think that will help. I mean, a resident spoke to me about two or three years ago about applying and he mentioned the, the CDL requirement, which got me thinking about this. I started the conversation with me and Randy about it. And so I'm glad to see it moving forward. I do think it's a recruitment tool and I, hopefully it will, it will help with getting some new people on board.
Yeah, I'd actually spoke with Patrick Cunningham from the School Department, the Transportation Director, and, and he does that program for the bus drivers and so he's helping me out with getting into the class.
Well, thank you, Ashley. Thanks for all you're doing.
No, no problem.
Anyone else with comments or questions? So Ashley, thank you for being here. And you can tell Randy that you were superb. And we'll be back in touch and it's our commitment to you to make sure that, again, you get the support you need to, to be a success. So, so thank you.
I appreciate that and we appreciate you guys.
Great.
Thank you.
Okay. Moving on. I believe that is going to be the last item on our agenda before we move to public comments. So if there are members of the public here who have comments on items not on the agenda, this is your opportunity to present your comments. Seeing none, move to Town Administrator and Select Board Reports. I will start with Art. And Art, I'm hoping you're gonna start with last night.
Yes, that's what I intend to focus on. Last evening, we did, as part of our Economic Development Strategic Planning Process, host a community open house at South Elementary. We had about 30 people in the room who joined us over an hour and a half period where we had an opportunity to get direct feedback from members of the community about what they'd like to see and what they think is important about development related to our commercial districts. The Hingham Square, the Shipyard, as well as South Hingham. And along the way, we had a, I think collectively, myself, Emily Wentworth and two members of our consulting team from Kiboyne Associates, we had an opportunity to speak informally with a number of residents and I think get a better sense of what people consider to be important. You know, going forward, we'll, we'll be meshing that input with the results of a, of a research effort that we have going on in parallel with our consulting team. And we'll be coming back to the community with some options to, to get some feedback on, in December, in a similar type of meeting date to be announced. In the meantime, we do have an online opportunity for residents if they are interested in providing feedback, if they could not join us last night, to give us some input as to that, what they consider to be important long, long-term in terms of what they'd like to see and what the challenges might be for each of those districts through a, a survey that we've attached to the Economic Development Strategic Planning page. And we'll, we'll be getting that information out to the community through our social media efforts. And I just want to thank those folks who, who did join, including from the planning board as well as the select board. We had good represented, representation from the HDIC as well.
Great.
Great, thank you. Michelle?
Yes, I have two quick ones this evening. One is on behalf of the Town Clerk, just reminding people of their opportunities to vote in person. So we've had early in-person voting part of last week and this week at Town Hall. The building's definitely been busy, so that continues tomorrow, Wednesday, October 30th from 8 to 5, Thursday, October 31st from 8 to 5 as well. And then the last day for early in-person voting is Friday, November 1st, again from 8 to 5. You can, of course, vote on Election Day Tuesday itself at your polling location and you can check all that information on the Town Clerk's website if you're not sure. The second one is to just welcome David Sequer, our new procurement and contracts manager to the town. He started yesterday, comes to us from the town of Lincoln and we are very happy and excited that he's here. So thank you, David.
Good to see you. That's it. Mr. Mayor?
Sure, actually have a few as well. I'll start with the special one-day, one-day special permits that I issued this past week. The South Shore Conservatory's annual meeting is being held on November 12th over at the conservatory between, from 6:00 to 6:30. It's a brief period, apparently. They're having about 50 people there and the police detail is not required. And at the conservatory also, they're doing their Sounds of Gratitude Concert that is going to be on Sunday, November 17th and they will be serving alcohol there between 5:00 and 5:30. They're expecting about 70 people and again, a police detail was not required. Also, I wanted to note the, the filling of vacancies, so Michelle mentioned David. We had three employees start yesterday, so we're starting to fill some of these vacancies, which is great. If anybody knows anyone that would like to come in, join the team, there are a lot of opportunities on our jobs page. Please take a look and, and, and send in a resume. I would also note that we're thankfully getting a lot more applicants for the positions than we used to. So we're getting good, solid, qualified people like David coming in to do these jobs, which is exactly what we need. So I'm, I'm really happy with that. And lastly, I'll note, unless someone else was going to, today is the last meeting that Ms. Katie Evers over here in the corner is going to be supporting us from Harvard Media. So Katie, thank you for everything you've done over the years and, and all of your work for us.
Thank you.
What were the two other vacancies?
GIS and the Planning Department Administrative Assistant.
Great, excellent. Anything else, Tom? Bill, I will turn it to you.
So also congratulations to Katie. Yeah, thank you for all your assistance during your time here. Want to congratulate the Hingham High School Crew Team on winning the state championship last weekend. Just thrilled to see it. And we will hopefully be having them here to one of our meetings next, in November. So a great, great team, great group of students, kids, just fantastic, was told to see that. I also want to thank the Hingham Education Foundation. I had the privilege of serving as a moderator at their spelling bee last Sunday and it was just a lot of fun and some great spellers out there. I did the fifth grade division and very impressed. So thanks to the HEF. I, I served on the HEF many years ago on the board. It's a fantastic organization, does so much good in this town and so lucky to have those, the hardworking board members.
Are you gonna spell moderator for us?
I was moderator, I'm not a speller.
Liz?
Excellent. Just want to echo the comments, lots to celebrate. Thank you, Katie. Congrats to the crew team, state champs. And just want to thank Town Clerk Carol Falvey and her team. They've been working tirelessly to support our election and please vote if you haven't already.
Yes, this will be, this will be our last meeting prior to the election. And so our, our Town Clerk, and it's not just her, it's, the office really has been doing a great job. And these are stressful times for people who are involved in supporting voting activity and we support their work and are very appreciative. Is this also our last meeting before Veterans Day?
Yes.
I think it is. So Tom, do you want to just review for us what is planned in, in town for Veterans Day?
December?
November.
November 11th.
11th at?
11.
11, 11 o'clock. And so Liz might be better prepared than I am.
It's always November 11th at 11.
So it'll, it'll be at, at Town Hall and there'll be usually a very large crowd, sometimes outside, depending on the weather, it could be inside, but the public is encouraged and welcome to attend. And it is something that this town is devoted to, honoring the veterans who have served. And this will be, I think, an exceptional service again on Veterans Day.
And I would add to that, there's also a breakfast morning of Veterans Day. It's the Corporal Al Boran St. Laurent Breakfast, starts about 8:30-ish here at Town Hall. All veterans and their families are welcome to come. And Larry St. Laurent was one of our most distinguished veterans in town, was a close friend of mine, and we honor him with a breakfast every year.
That's great. I've got nothing else. I will take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
Roll call vote. Bill?
Aye.
Liz?
Aye.
And I'm in, as well, we are adjourned. Good to see everyone.
Thank you.
We recognize that taking time to visit, call, or email our town departments to report issues in Hingham doesn't always fit your schedule. Are you looking for an easier way to communicate with the town? Well, now there's an easier way. With the My Hingham mobile app, you can submit service requests or gain information with just a few taps of your phone. To get started, simply download the My Hingham app from the Apple App Store or Google Play or simply scan our QR code to get the access to the app that's best for your phone. Once you've opened the app, select the Submit a Service Request button. From there, you can choose the type of request you want to submit, whether it's a pothole, a fallen tree, or something else. You'll then be prompted to take a photo of the issue and provide a brief description. You can also use the app to track the status of your issue and receive updates. Using My Hingham puts immediate access to town resources in the palm of your hand, including calendars of meetings and events, agendas for upcoming meetings, building permit filing options, online bill payment options, information about our boards, committees, departments, and services. So why wait? Download the My Hingham app today and report issues and get information on town government with ease.